I was contacted today by Marcus Anderson. Mr. Anderson appreciates the opportunity to once again coach football at MHS, approved in June to volunteer coach, but has chosen to continue his education at SIU, work there full-time, and will help with SIU football. As a result, Mr. Anderson will not be able to serve as MHS volunteer football coach this school year, the 2017-18 school year. And this communication was by Glenn Navarro.
Recommendation is to approve.
Recommendation from the administration, I have motion?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, here.
Murphy'sboro School Board, I am currently enrolled in a graduate class at SIUC for summer 2017 through summer 2019. This course is designed to assist my content knowledge with math learning standards while enhancing my application for delivering the instruction of math in the classroom. The cohort lasts for two years with eight total overall credit hours. The class for this summer is called Math 411 and is through a cohort called Southern Illinois Making Connections. It is also made possible through a federal grant and the ROE. I am requesting permission to apply the eight credit hours to the salary over the next two years. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Tammy Caldwell.
Recommendation be to approve graduate credit hours?
Recommendation from the administration, I have motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, here.
And this is a similar letter. Dear Murphy'sboro School Board, I am currently enrolled in Math 411, a graduate class through SIUC for summer 2017. This course is designed to look at math instruction and the Illinois learning standards for mathematics. The cohort is called Southern Illinois Making Math Connections and is made possible through a federal grant and the ROE. I am requesting permission to apply the three credit hours to the salary schedule. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Respectfully submitted, Sherry Schenck.
Recommendation to approve Mrs. Schenck as well?
Recommendation from the administration, I have motion to approve.
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, here.
The final communication is regarding the special board meeting that I had sent correspondents out. Finally came up with July 31st. I believe that looking, if that's a Monday.
It is.
Okay. I hope that still works with everybody. I don't know about Dr. Corley at this point, but that's okay. I'm wondering about a time. I know if Dr. Corley plans to be here, he usually can't get here till about 5:15 or something like that. Do you want to set the time at 5:15, 5:30? And this is for personnel matters, if you recall.
I at least need 5:30.
I just want to make it six.
Six is better for everybody?
Enough of course, what's better for everybody else is fine with me.
Six works. Yeah. Okay, we'll do that.
Six.
That it? July 31st. That's all I have.
Okay. Move on to fishbowl. I look like this?
Nope.
Number nine, Freedom of Information Act request.
My digest says none, I'm guessing the...
It came in after this.
It came in after this, okay. So we did get a request, but we're, it'll be on the next board meeting's agendas and it's that smart procure quarterly request. You'll get to know them well. So we have none for this board meeting.
Okay. Given on to number 10, recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a manner of public comment warrants discussion or action by the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Any employee concerns? Okay, thank you all for coming. Your old business, number one, financial updates.
We're all aware that Senate Bill 1 passed the House, it passed the Senate, and the Senate has not given it to the governor. The governor has staunchly said that he will veto it. There's also a Senate Bill 1124, which I think the best way to say it is it has no chance to ever see the floor to be voted on. So both of those are evidence-based funding models. As we all know, the state has passed the expenditure plan and the revenue plan, so we do have a state budget. In the expenditure plan, a lot of people don't realize this, both of those were vetoed, both of those were overridden. We've got a state budget. In the expenditure plan, though, I want to make sure that we're all understanding that it says that it funds the amount and it says that it does it through an evidence-based model, which means in August, if they don't have Senate Bill 1 or Senate Bill 1124 or some new Senate bill that explains the evidence-based model, we won't get our general state aid. We will be the only organization, as we've been the only ones that had appropriations the last two years, we would be the only ones that actually don't have the mechanism to properly pay us. It can't default to the old system and just put that money into the old system. So the options here are Senate Bill 1 gets vetoed and overridden, but that needs changes, add it on to Senate Bill 1. Another option would be Senate Bill 1 gets signed by the governor. I think that would make even more significant changes needed to Senate Bill 1. Nothing happens to which, there's going to be no general state aid in August, no categoricals, and next month we will be talking about tax anticipation warrants so that we can...
Operate with borrowed money.
Get going. Well, yeah, operate with borrowed money. I talked to fellow superintendents today and we're not getting much pushing as far as tweeting out or yelling and screaming. Everyone seems to feel like this is going to work. It might take one of the school districts to be like Chicago State was, you know, when the higher ed finally got their funded, it was Chicago State that kind of said, "We're closed." And that's when the funding came for the higher ed. That's like the worst-case scenario. I am still cautiously optimistic about this. I just want to make sure that we're all aware that when people say, "That's awesome that we got a budget," that we know that K-12 still has another hurdle that's coming and I don't know, I've not heard much. I did get some phone calls about the desire for me to push Terry Bryant on vetoing. Terry and I were in many conversations about the revenue and the expenditure bills. She took a very good stance and voted for her region, and I thanked her for voting for her region. And right now, Senate Bill 1 would give us probably an increase of $700,000. Senate Bill 1124 would see closer to a $1.4 million. The thing is, is what they did was they took that pension, that CPS pension thing, and then they just threw it back into the model. That's why we would get so much money. Without that money going to the legislature or without going to CPS, they won't vote for it. So the question is, is what will happen? There's been discussions, I've heard, about the governor being advised to just line item veto that portion. I've had some people tell me that he can't do that because it's not an expenditure, he can only line item expenditure bills, where this is more of a funding model bill. I have no idea what's, what he can do. My law class was not that in-depth to these kind of situations. I just want you to be aware. I, talking to other superintendents, it could get very hairy there, but they're not going to allow us to close. They just can't. I mean, you can't fathom that.
As far as Senate Bill 1, the way it passed, it didn't pass with a veto-proof majority.
It did not. It did not. And that's where they're talking about adding amendments to it, I don't know.
That's why they're holding it in the Senate, because they know it's not veto-proof majority.
Right. And so what they're going to do is either add amendments to it, or they're trying to come up with another deal or something. What that is, I do not know. Have you heard anything from me? No? Okay. So I will say, while we're talking about financial updates, I got my yearly visit from a member of the Smizer Board. We had made some requests, and I'm proud to say that the Smizer Board is giving $5,000 to the Creating Educational Opportunities Program. That's that Jackson County CEO program. They are giving $23,000 to the Crimson Express to buy band uniforms.
How much was that?
Twenty-three thousand to Crimson for band uniforms. They gave us 25,000, which is the price that we told them is pretty much a year's worth of travel, a year's worth of athletics for soccer.
Salaries.
So it was...
Twenty-five thousand?
What's that?
Salaries.
Salaries, yeah, for the coaches and all the other things. So we got 25,000 for the soccer program. And then, this was kind of the stretch that I call, I wrote the letter requesting, and I explained the state financial issues. And to retroactively, we told them that there's $44,000 of, we jan calculated, $44,000 of unreimbursable. Our transportation comes back at 80% reimbursed, but we do all of our educational field trips last year, all of our athletic field trips last year that we don't get reimbursed from the state, total 44,000. And Smizer gave us a check for that, to help us out with transportation. This year, it doesn't, it's not paying for transportation this year, it's just a pseudo-categorical payment. And when we were asking what we needed, they gave us that. And then they're also giving $5,000 for this webcam system for athletics. So that's a great total. I got a check of $102,000. We can't thank Elizabeth Smizer enough. And I wanted you to be aware, but the soccer program will continue, again, without any district funds. The band will be seeing new uniforms, again, with no district funds. We were made somewhat whole with transportation helping us through this tough times. And so when I say I'm cautiously optimistic about our finances, it's because of the wonderful people that do all the wonderful work around here, so.
The athletic webcam, is that going to be to, you'll be streaming games and stuff?
Yeah, and currently we stream games and we just basically have a...
Stationary.
Yeah, stationary. And what this is, is it's a subscription, I believe, right? So it's a revenue generating source. And if you want to do the things, it'll actually follow the action. And there's five different cameras and, so it's a much nicer system. We are going to continue to stream the free static version, and then there's a subscription cost to anybody that wants to upgrade, but this is...
Is there a chance we can work students into calling the game?
We've discussed that for a long time, and when the budget finally gets back to us building that program, that's one of the programs we'd love to see, and having people on the side of the games, doing post-interview, interviews and whatnot. The high school does their announcements right now through YouTube. And you can watch all of the high school announcements being done by the high school kids. And so we've talked about getting a club that would do the videos to add to that and all those other clips, but it's just right now we don't have the manpower to do something that, at that level. But yeah, that is the goal in the future.
That it, Mr. Corley?
That's it for the financial updates.
Move on to number two, summer project maintenance updates.
Yes. So I was getting ready to talk to you all about this stuff, I'm reminded of a superintendent I worked for that at this time would always say, "You know what, school's going to start in August and we will be open." And luckily, the buildings are ready, are going to be ready, they're starting on the halls. They're at those final stages of getting the insides done. It has been a very good productive summer. The county facility sales tax really kind of allowed us to do some projects that we've been holding off for way too long, because we know the revenue's coming. Every time you buy stuff now in July, we're starting to get some money for that. We won't see the money until November, but it allowed us to just say, "You know what, we can spend some of this O&M money because we're going to be giving the money back." We did that cash flow analysis. So I want to just kind of talk about some of the projects. There's really two types. I call them help desk items and larger maintenance issues, okay? Help desk items. When a teacher sees or needs something fixed, or if like there's a leak in the bathroom that gets noticed or anything like that, they can enter an item on a help desk. And when they enter that item, what happens is it goes to John. John can then assign it to a person, he can comment on it, he can, whenever he does that, it then sends an email back to the originator of the help desk. The technology department uses the help desk and has used it really, really well. We have been really focusing in on the help desk and kind of reviewing all the old tickets. The help desk got full and ugly because a lot of the jobs we weren't financially prepared to start doing and pushing through, and so it kind of got longer. Looking at the help desk, we started saying, when we started getting the county facility sales tax, we started looking at the help desk and we started having weekly progress Got into some discussions about POs, bids, and as we improve our systems on addressing those issues, we came up with a goal at the beginning of this year is to empty the help desk, to get all the items done. Right now, we've got most of the items almost done. Finishing items is an incredible pain, but we're not going to close anything out that's not adequately done. And I'll talk more about that in a little bit, but the goal is to do that. What we found with some of these lessons, batching jobs. So like the, one of the older tickets on the help desk was the gate, the big metal gate in the back of the middle school. It is a huge gate and one of the bars is bent, and it's been on there for a while. Since we were going to get that done and we got with Terrance Fencing to do that, we decided we want the barbed wire off the middle school fence around there and we want the gate installed. We have people that drive in and end up parking on our field and driving around our track and causing quite the mess. So we wanted a gate to try and control weekend visitors on that. So we've got that gate installed. Got an email from Steve to the Terrance Fencing Company because there's a list of things we don't like about that gate. It wasn't the way we described it, it wasn't the way we designed it. They're coming back and they're going to make good on those corrections, but it is a, when you're working with that kind of stuff, it is a larger project. Steve took the lead on the fence project because John's been doing a lot more of the plumbing. And when we had our weekly meetings to make sure things got done, Jan's been making phone calls, I've been making phone calls, we've been trying to work more as a team because there's some days we just need John not working on the phone and working in the middle school or the high school doing the plumbing work. It's like with the time and the frustrations of just getting those details done and getting them done right, you have to talk to the person that's bidding and quoting the job for you, and then when the installer comes, you need to talk to them too. This morning, I stopped by the middle school and I saw that they had the carpet out for the auditorium. The oldest help desk item that we had is the tiles that's coming up in the auditorium, the middle school auditorium. We're getting that replaced, and to make that job a little bit more doable, we're getting the carpet replaced in the auditorium in the bottom section. So they were doing the install today, I walked in there and the installer told me he's got concerns with matching it up in this area. There's a curved front, there's this line up there, and I'm looking at it and he goes, "You know, I don't know if I would have picked this carpet for that area." And so I called John, John quickly called Gary Meredith, and Gary Meredith called his installer, and the installer came back and said, "Yeah, I, I, I need to flop it back, it's going to be blah, 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 blah." And he told me that there's not going to be any problem with this seam. The installer, though, wasn't aware of the plan to the front curved area and flopping it back and cutting out this area so that it goes into the aisle to do that. So just me stopping by, seeing that they were doing that, and getting out of my car to talk with them, hopefully saved us the fact that we're going to have to have them tear it all out and reinstall it over Christmas break or whatnot. You know, it's those kind of details that you just, you got to hold a lot of hands and we're finding that's a little frustrating with the time. Those are some of the help desk things. Some of the bigger, larger projects got done, though, because they were being done with those help desk things. The maintenance items, larger maintenance items, as I said, we got the county facility sales tax, okay? Last year, I met with all of the buildings, Mr. Beavers and Mr. Rungy were at those meetings, and we took a list of everything that we had, just what the teacher said we need. We need this, we need that, we need this. And I made a list, you're going to get a handout, you're going to take it home and you're going to review it. It is the list of everything that the teacher said we need to get done. Some of them are done, some of them are in progress, some of them are items that are great ideas, but until we start building onto the buildings, I don't know how we're going to solve them. They're still on the list because they're things that the teachers would need. Some of those include like, they would like to see copier alcoves in the hallways. Can't necessarily build a little alcove for a copier in a hallway, in the hallways that we currently have, but that is something that we want to take notice of when we do, if we have to build onto the general with extensions and whatnot, those are the details that we're going to be looking at. So with this handout, it's the larger view of the building issues. You'll see that Carruthers has a lot of, like, you know, they want more lockers, they want more, a lot of the buildings like, want more bathrooms. Some of them just want some more ventilation in the bathrooms. There's some doors, like there's a door at the general that used to be the music room, it's now the computer lab. When it opens up, it opens up into the gym. When that building was built, it didn't have, I guess, the code requirement that the doors have to all open into a wall. When you go into a school and you see the little inserts, that's because the doors can't flow into, so we've got a door that just opens up into a gym. That needs to be addressed. I don't know how we're going to address it, but we're going to have to address it somehow. So those are kind of the details on there. Interestingly, I got an email from Mr. Green, and I'm going to, I made copies of them all for you all, so you're going to get one of these too. And this is a great example of things that, if you go around the buildings, you can see. And if you have access to the help desk, a lot of these things he can put on the help desk. Now, he doesn't have access. I'm going to take this and I'm going to meet with the maintenance guys in our weekly meeting and review them, but a lot of them are going to go on the help desk. Some of them are going to get added to this sheet because some of them are larger maintenance issues, like the, actually, the middle school HVAC is one of them that comes to mind, our window units drip causing the mold. When we do our HVAC unit at the middle school, that will rectify that AC unit thing. So that's, that would be on this list, but it's already on there because that's an issue that we have. But like the gutters at the middle school, that needs, they, I'm assuming the gutters that you saw were the ones behind the middle school and the, and that's a common one that gets filled, that's a help desk item that we're going to add on there and then that can be dealt with. So anyway, you're going to get both of those handouts. Those are the two ways for us to kind of deal with those jobs. I'd like to say, though, the big things. These are some of the stuff that we did get done that I'm very, very happy with. General Johnny Logan, we finally got the carpet that was installed last year fixed and rectified. Asked the custodians at the general what's their biggest issue, and they said the partitions in the bathroom by the gymnasium. It's weekly, they're sanding them because after school, club, and other people write things on the walls, and so then they have to sand them off. So we've got the partitions that we like, that when you sand them, you don't need to repaint them, so it's harder to write on. There are darker material which is harder to write on. There's a lot of good things about these new partitions, and we've been putting them out throughout a lot of the buildings. An example at the general of a help desk item, the radios. We have a repeater at the general that allows our base unit to talk to the other base units, okay? Inside the building, there were issues with the radios not hearing the base, so we had to add an antenna, a repeater antenna. That has been fixed. We still have issues, though, where the handheld, if you're in the general and I'm on a handheld and I say, "Mr. Green, can you come here?" And he's on his handheld radio, he can't hear it. The fix for that is about $7,000 for an inside repeater antenna. The fact that every build, every classroom has a phone, and if I say, "Base, could you get Mr. Green to come to me?" And the base in the office can then call Mr. Green because it goes to the base, I don't know if we're going to spend the $7,000. That's something that's on the help desk that's going to sit there until A, we have the money, or B, we decide we really need it. Right now, there seems to be other options that we could do with that kind of example, but those are some of the things at the general. Carruthers, Mrs. Barr got her computer lab moved, which, have you seen, do you like your new computer lab?
I do, thank you.
Yes. Her room was where the computer lab always was, and it was always undersized, but when you really just focus in on the third, fourth, and fifth grade, it was way undersized. So, you know, moving a computer lab involves a lot of electrical work to make sure that they all get, all the units get electricity and whatnot, but we moved them into a larger room. We also got the halls and the cafeteria at Carruthers painted. That was one of the main things the teachers really said, they, you know, it is the oldest building, it was the last one to probably get any paint, so the blue lines in the Carruthers is now gone. It looks wonderful. We did not do the gym. We did not do the gym because, well, the bid for the gym was just way too much, and we got more bang for our buck on the hallways and the cafeteria. So we're holding off on the gym. They too got bathroom partitions. The bus garage at the middle school with this, was our year where the buses are no longer at, going to be at the middle school. We got that fence done.
Where did the buses go?
Well, they are currently in Carbondale at their place there.
At the West End.
They own land on, what is the name of the road where they own land over by the Jackson County?
In industrial park, they're right next to Norman Fred Trucking, they have some land over there by the county highway garage, you know, they have...
So they talked about doing a bus garage there and...
They've got some.
But they moved them out.
... at Devoanny Miller right now, too.
By the airport?
Crossland Airport.
But I'm not sure that's our district.
I mean, they got buses, they got...
Right, yeah. And they've had them there for a while, across the street on the other side by that, what used to be that pawn shop, but I, I don't think that's our district in our contracts that they have to be, that there has to be a bus garage in, within District 11. So I asked that question this week or the end of last week, and I really haven't been answered. I don't know if they know for sure where they're going to be, but they will be somewhere.
With that move, though, that allowed us to do the fence, I did, been one of my desires to get the barbed wire gone, and the barbed wire is gone. We still need to cut off the barbed wire poles to that. Our guys can do that easier and we just got to find time to do that. The auditorium carpet, which was one of the oldest things on there, is being installed today. We had plaster work at the middle school. If you remember, there were some pictures with the county facility sales tax of our crumbling wall in the middle school where we had a roof drain that was leaking, and we got a sleeve put in the inside of the roof drain. So right now, all the leaks at the middle school are fixed. Because of that, with the leaks being fixed, we had, huh?
All?
At this last checking, it is a hundred-some-year-old building, but at the last checking, all of the leaks at the middle school are fixed. We did not put sleeves in all the tubes, so as we find new leaks, most of the plaster work was done. I did send an email to Mr. Keener today that we're going to make a list of all the buildings, all the rooms that need the plaster work, because we need to bundle all those jobs at one. There's tuck pointing they did outside, not tuck pointing, drive-it work that they did outside at the middle school and back behind by the tunnel and by the cottage, and that looks beautiful. But ANK is going to come back over Christmas break. So we did send out an email today to try, and so Mr. Keener can talk to his teachers at the beginning, so that we can have a list, hopefully by September, for the work that's going to be done at the middle school over Christmas break. So the plaster at the middle school got done. High school, auditorium's the most obvious change. The main thing there is, I think, Mr. Keller spent most of his time in there doing plumbing. Every bathroom's had issues and going out and just re-changing all of the valves, all of the stools, taking those apart and redoing those, we're getting all that stuff done. Football field, last year, we didn't even know if our last couple of games, we were going to be able to safely play because there was no, it was dirt. We were playing on dirt. So this year, we killed it all off and we got it sprigged, and if you drive by, the football field does look much nicer than it's ever looked before. We do have our 100th game, and as I say this now, we've got Chief in the audience, I've talked to Mr. Beavers earlier today, Mr. Beavers as part of the auxiliary crew. We're meeting this Friday to discuss what's needed for that football game. Mr. Navarro and I have that on schedule, and I'm going to hopefully get a meeting in the afternoon where we can talk about traffic and other concerns for that 100th game, because there's a lot of things going on. I also want to say that at the last meeting, Dr. Corley brought up the stop lines, and I believe we're going to get those painted in the next...
We just got the quote for it.
Okay, so the stop lines are going to be... Okay, so the stop lines are gonna be done soon.
Do we have to pay for that? The city won't come out and put, you know, about stop signs?
No, we, we had about stop signs too, where you do that, with the lines where they say stop here, it's not...
The roads off of 14th and off of, uh...
16th.
16th are school roads, they're not city roads. We can't enforce traffic laws on them and the city won't maintain them.
The signs have already been changed out though. We did that within a week of the board meeting and the painting of the stop lines at the places are getting polished up, so... Anyway, so what I'm going to pass out is the first document, take one, pass it around. This is an Excel document, I broke it down by building and, um, there are my notes. That's for you to kind of go over and, and review. This one is the emails that Mr. Green shared with us. And I do appreciate that. It's, it's good to have this information as we get better and better of making the lists and getting on top of the work. I think we'll become more and more efficient with getting things done.
What about the track at the high school?
Track at the high school currently is in need of repair. What it really needs is, is, is the amount of money that it would take and we really need to just strip it down. And so that's one of those things where, um, until we know what we're gonna be doing with the football field, I'm reluctant to put the money into the track until we've got a better plan as to... I, I don't like to spend that amount of money and then...
But then it say last year that there's really no repairs, right?
We talked, there's just so many holes in it.
Yeah, that they've already been patched so many times that it's pretty much not...
Gonna be ripped up, but...
The, the, and that's where, with our county facility sales tax, you know, the next big project that we really do need to do is the elevator at the middle school, the HVAC issues at the middle school. Both of those are electrical and energy efficiency issues. Our athletic facilities, our football field and our track, and some of those things need to be done as well. I'm not saying what's gonna be where on the list, but those are some of the things that, as we go through these items, we're gonna need to start having some more and more discussions over what's our next priorities. I was hoping to have that more listed out by the end of the summer, but, um... The auditorium project really is a lot of, a lot of extra stuff and then there was the whole budget thing that took a lot of time, so, um...
And that's going out tomorrow for the auditorium?
Yeah, the bits go out tomorrow for the auditorium, so...
Something to think about on the track, I don't know, I'm trying to think, Robinson High School put in a new track in probably mid 90s and it was a community, they got a grant for a community. So essentially, they had to keep it open to the community till 10 o'clock at night before they could lock the gate, lights on so the community could go out there and walk, use it as they want. I don't know if that's something that, I don't know where it came from.
Could you, could you reach out to them and find out where the grant came from? Because we've also looked at the NFL will do a grant for football fields. And, and we've, we've looked at it but never really, so it's pretty extensive and the chances of getting a return on it is, is, are slim.
Who takes care of most of the grant, right?
Yeah, that would be me, Jan, a lot of the teachers write a lot of the grants actually as well. If they're doing a competitive grant, dare I say like the...
Full-time grant, right?
We work, we have a good partnership with SIU, so like a lot of the STEM stuff that's happening like, um... Oh, now Whiskey's not here, is she? What's the name of the bear that they were, were exploring? Their little, um, and they're not an actual bear, but they, they just did a project where they were looking for these bears that can survive in space, tripennoid or something like that. But that would be like a, a grant that was written with SIU. So, um, the teachers do a lot of those educational grants with their, with their connections with SIU.
So I have a few questions.
Okay.
The track, I know we talked about how it's been patched and patched and patched and then was last year the first year? We didn't host a track meet for three years?
Mr. Navarro, three years.
We have it, okay, so have we had a company come out and look at it and say, "Sorry, it's a quarter of a million"? Was that what it was gonna be to repair it? Two came out?
Approximately ATG company came out, maybe supplied the district with drawings, renderings, 3D flyover videos, the entire football, part of the baseball and the track were shy of a million.
The football field and that would be moving the, the football field, this was what, five, six years ago? That we actually got that, that, that look at and they've said that they'd still do it. It has the soccer field actually in the football field. And to do that, you've gotta move the long jump and the other things that are the sand things and those would be getting moved behind where the practice field is now. But having the football field redone in turf, it, the football field is the practice field, it is where the band can practice. It, it becomes much more, um...
Baseball can use it in the spring if the fields are wet or...
It becomes much more advantageous. And so we moved that stuff behind the visitors' field with the idea that we would also, I mean, we got the plans for what we'd love to see the tennis courts develop into, which would be another fieldhouse, which you'll see a lot of the teachers on there mention, "We need another gym, we need another fieldhouse, we need another..."
But that, we know for certain that to repair the track is out of the question. I just hate not having track meets, for God's sake.
It, it would be a matter of spending a quarter of a million and, and that's a huge, right now, a, a, a big project. If you were gonna do the track, I would strongly encourage us to do the football field too because...
Well, that makes sense to do it all at once, I mean, you would...
And the estimates I'm seeing is with a football field with mowing time and with painting, that you don't have to do anymore, they, they... The company will say 30,000 is savings, I would say maybe around 15,000 would be savings then.
I guess I just didn't remember if it was an actual company that came out and said to do the track only will be a quarter of a million, but...
Yeah.
Maybe it was, okay.
ATG.
Well, ATG did a separate bid for track only?
The sales guy said to redo the track, it's gonna cost you that.
Okay, all right, and then you mentioned the plumbing in all the schools or, or at the high school. The other schools needed some repairs too, is that? I remember Carruthers had some issues, but I think that was kids breaking stuff. But do other schools need plumbings?
We've been, I've been working at all schools.
Okay.
And I'm still not completely done, but we'll get there.
That's a big progress, okay.
I don't think that there was a fully functioning stool at the high school.
The gate that we can just put up at the middle school, that's the one, like going to the practice field, it, it isn't what we wanted?
The email I got from Mr. Carrington, because he and Jeff both met with the terrace fencing, right? So correct me if I'm wrong, because I was not in that meeting, but they made it very clear that we need to have a gate that is latchable and lockable so that we can get a key to Danny Gould, who does everything, that, that it's 14 feet to, to be able to get a car in and out. But really what they said was, "There's no way for us to stop people from sitting on this gate, it needs to be sturdy." And, 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 you know, we're gonna not encourage kids to sit on the gate, but, I mean, in the off hours, there's gonna be people sitting on this gate. These are the, the, the issues that Mr. Carrington shared with the company today and that is, the gate swings both ways. We wanted the gate to swing in, concern is that it would swing out into a car or pedestrian. So we didn't want it to go out into the street area, we wanted it to go that way.
Just in.
So that was a detail that we explained to them. The pole stability, yesterday afternoon, the left pole seemed weak, but today, the right one wiggles a bit. These gates are gonna take some abuse and if they are weak now, they will fail shortly. Three, latching mechanisms and supports, and this was a long one, but it's, um... A lot of concerns with the lacking mechanism and supports. The way the gate comes in now, it sits on a little bar and that bar is just not the sturdiest thing. And so we're not real happy with that. The extra fencing that was supposed to be secured and cut off was left as is. It's been planned for completion at a later date, but I wanna bring it up, that's just a reminder that, you know, the gate, the, the fencing that they didn't fix, they've got the roll of fencing still there. And then the bent bolts used to attach the latches seem a bit unusual, I imagine. You usually use U-bolts for that setup, but wanted to avoid a bolt sticking out somewhere and he's got pictures that were attached, I didn't print out the pictures, but, um... Those were the concerns is that, when, when they had the conversation with the owner of terrace fencing and he came up with the bid specs, we wanted to make sure it was secure, we wanted to make sure it swung one way, we wanted to make sure, and so now it's a matter of them coming back and making it right.
So what was done right on the facts, I guess?
There is a divider in the middle and two things on the side and I talked with Steve today and I haven't had a chance to talk with Mr. Keener about it because it's summer, but, um... For me, it looks kind of weird because you've got the driveway in and you've got the pole offset. It almost feels like we wanna do the concrete to make it where the driveway is and, and, you know, but that's, that's the next stage that we can do. Right now, we just need to make sure that those things...
Have we paid them?
Oh, no.
Yeah, we held on to the carpeting check that just got finished for over a year while they were making good on that, so, um...
There's two other, I did the boot camp...
It's just, it's a hassle because, you know, the amount of phone calls and the amount of emails and then the amount of time when... I mean, we were clear up at the front side, right, and so, um...
Did, uh, boot camp workers work out this summer or not?
No, boot camp are currently doing, when we called them for Decoin, they are doing all of their work remodeling the, um... I keep saying youth and rec center, but that's not the name of it.
IYC.
IYC, so they were, yeah, they, they pretty much told us there's no way that they could come out. We're hoping for next summer.
Is that gonna be done in October or something?
Do you know when any IYC will be open?
They're staffing up now, they've already recalled some of the former IDJJ employees, Baytown DOC employees, they're probably gonna start moving inmates in August to September. But they probably won't be at full capacity until, if I were it or so.
The only other thing I'd suggest, during all our sales tax work, we talked about making sure pictures of work gets out there. So I just really encourage pictures along the way.
Yes.
Might have to keep momentum going for it.
Anything else on this maintenance facility?
You said the Carruthers gym, to paint the bit was too high.
Well, what, how much was it for the gym, it was 20...
It adds a lot to the estimate and we were, you know, primarily they went, the hallways done and the, and the gym's kind of an afterthought because it wasn't really as bad as the cafeteria and the hallways. So we're gonna look at doing that next summer and having a lot of other additional painting done. Because for the last couple of years, there's been no painting done. We used to have a, I came here 15 years ago, we had a dedicated district painter.
I was gonna say, is that not something we can just do ourselves?
Well, I mean, that's all he did was paint and then we contracted out for a while, but as money got tighter and tighter, we haven't, we haven't had them, I mean, we haven't had a whole lot of painting done and, you know, unless without student workers or, I don't know, boot camp workers painting future years.
They won't paint.
They won't paint, okay, so, you know...
They were clear with that last year, they don't, the boot camp workers won't paint.
We're kind of limited because our custodial staff is getting ready, is, you know, waxing, cleaning the whole building for the school year because, I mean, that's the only time they might, you know, hit some hallways during Christmas break or spring break. But, you know, moving things out of rooms, stripping down this, these rooms and hallways are getting stripped down all the way and I don't know when the last time that happened because a lot of times they just do a top scrub and then put another coat of wax on, it takes a lot less time, but we're taking these down all the way because they were starting to look yellow, so, I mean, district-wide, there's a lot of floors, you know, carpets clean, all that gets done. So having time to paint that too with less staff, you know, every year, you know, every few years it seems like we have a little less staff. So, um, I don't think we'll ever get to the point where we have a dedicated district painter again, but, um, you know, maybe, maybe seasonal, that kind of thing, we could, we could look at that.
And the middle school, the seats in the auditorium were a concern or is that coming later?
They are, that needs to come later.
They are.
We've actually looked at that a, a, a few years ago and there's two ways you can go with that. You can either get vintage seats that are new but vintage, or you can get them reupholstered. And vintage seats new would be cheaper than reupholstering and fixing, so, but yeah. And then when we do those, we're, um, actually had a conversation with the carpet layers today because, you know, people that lay the stuff are the ones that know best. I said, "When we take these seats out, what would you suggest putting underneath it?" Because right now, underneath the seats in the middle school auditorium is tile that should really be stripped and waxed. And there's no easy way to strip and wax around those seats that are attached. And so we discussed vinyl or pouring an epoxy or something that doesn't need wax when you reinstall the new seats, so, but yeah, it's on our list.
How much was it to reupholster the chairs? I mean, were you taking them out and shipping them somewhere or...
No, they, I, I think they would come in and do it, but it was like $125,000 or something. I mean, I know it was over $100,000 for that.
We had similar issues with the auditorium seats at the high school, that kind of got taken care of.
We had a big issue with going on the dorm. Good, okay, moving on, number three is registration update.
Take one, pass them around, please. You'll see that these numbers are very similar to last year's. In fact, um, over the summer, we've had more kids that have moved and are leaving us than entering us. Now, I say that with full knowledge that the families that are moving here aren't going to register their kids probably until they start seeing the yellow buses on the road, okay? That said though, I, I think we're still solid where we are. There's been less talk about the Exodus from Karo. I think we're gonna be pretty solid with these numbers.
25 kids in first grade is a lot. We need to seriously talk about that seven sections.
Anything else on that one?
This is July, if you were gonna do that, you'd have to post...
Today?
Right now.
And discuss more in closed session.
Yeah. Did this change much from last month? No?
No.
Was that what you meant last month?
Yeah. In fact, if they moved anywhere, I think they got smaller, but ones or twos is...
More Christian. Moving on, new business, approval of bread bid for 2017, 2018, you have an enclosure number one. I like this one. Bimbo Bakery.
Bimbo Bakery, it is the recommendation to accept the bid as presented.
Is there price fixing in this?
What's that?
Is there price fixing in the bread and the waste collection and disposal business or what?
In different years, we used to get multiple bids, you know, at least two. So, you know, we used to get more than one trash bid, I don't know why all of a sudden...
I think it's the state of Illinois, we can't get people to finance us. I mean, people don't wanna bid on stuff because they don't think we'll pay the bills. I think that's how it is.
Because we may not.
The trash one, we haven't got two bids on that for quite a while.
So you're lucky if you get somebody to bid on it at all.
Sure makes it easy for that one.
Yeah.
Indeed.
Any questions on Bimbo Bakery? If not, take a motion to approve bread, bread as, bread bid as presented. And a second?
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number two, approval waste collection and disposal bid for 2017, 2018.
You can see the recommendations to accept the bid for the amount of $2,667.95 for waste collection and disposal for the 1718 school year.
And a motion to approve the waste collection bid.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, approved food and food products bid 2017, 2018 enclosure three.
You'd be the only one that just has issues with this, but moving the disposal bid right there between the two food products, kind of... Anyway, the recommendations to award the food and food products bid to the two vendors, Cole Foods and US Foods, Inc. as specified on the bid summary for the 1718 school year. So this is where we peel them off and Georgia does the sum from this and sum from that depending on what the best price is.
And a motion to approve food and food products bid as presented. And a motion to approve food and food products bid as presented. In a second?
Okay.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Approved diesel fuel bid 2017, 2018 enclosure number four.
Interestingly, this was the first year since I've been here, we've actually had two bids for the oil and gas. Am I correct with that, right?
Right, I've been here 15, this is the first time.
And the recommendation is that we go with the FS services, they were the lowest bid, this is Paul Hines, is a local company, I called him today and gave him the heads up that he did not win this bid. But yeah, this was the first time we've ever had two on the oil and the gas.
No questions, do a motion to approve the diesel fuel bid as presented. Second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next one is the approver, approval of the motor oil bid, enclosure five.
It's the same thing, Southern FS, for the first time bid that, we have no reason to deny them, and so the recommendation is to go with Southern FS.
District administration recommends approval of the bids, do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, approved district soda contact, closure six.
This one, we've been with Pepsi for how long now, Jan?
Five years on this, and before that, we were with Pepsi also, is that five years as well?
About 15.
Anyway, the, we've got two proposals, one from Coke, one from Pepsi, after discussions with Len and discussions with Jan, I think what we'd like to recommend is the, we move over to Coke, we make the change. They're going to add a commission, depending on how much we sell, and we feel that they were the better, better offer. It's kinda hard to calculate, 'cause you don't know how much you're gonna get from that commission, per se, but this will at least tell Pepsi that...
We need to do better.
We need to do better.
People like Coke, I mean...
Make some cherry Coke, man.
The preferences of the administration is not a factor in this decision.
It was not, 'cause when I used to drink soda, it was Pepsi, so...
They'll do taste tests when they bring the...
So the recommendations for Coke.
And recommendation to move to Coke, do I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number seven, approved to destroy verbatim recordings of closed session.
And this is one of those yearly things that we do, it's always our recommendation to destroy the verbatim recordings, we've got the closed session minutes dated on hand, so questions or concerns on that one?
In the motion, do you mind giving the dates?
Oh, July 2013 through June 2014. Sorry, Nancy.
That's okay. I'm assuming there's no issues with any of those meetings anymore, is there?
No, these are just the recordings, yeah, and I'm cautious, you notice, I'm only going up to 2014, I could go further, I like to keep them a little bit, just in case, you know, so I may even start being more cautious, I'll get rid of that in a bit, yeah.
Administration's recommendation to approve to destroy verbatim recordings of closed session dated July 2013 through June 2014.
I like the motion.
And a second?
Say it.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, permission to employ ancillary employees as needed.
And what this does is, for a lot of the non-cert certifications, it allows me the permission to hire them, but, you know, 'cause school starts before our next board meeting, or leave it or not, school starts before our next board meeting, so when we have our next board meeting, school will have been in session for a few days, but in session. So this gives me the permission to hire as needed the non-certifieds and then bring it to that board meeting for your approval, or we send them home and we find something else, just...
Any questions? If not, I have a motion to approve employ ancillary employees as needed.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we have a need for a closed session.
Make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to Section 2 of the Open Meeting Act Title V, ILCS 120/2C, to review discussion of minutes lawfully closed, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district.
Do I have a second?
Safe.
Motion and a second.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Dor, yes. Mrs. James, yes. Mr. Rungy, absent. Dr. Corley, absent. Mr. Beavers?
Yes. Give us a few seconds.